The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
All right, so we're going to begin our regular portion of our meeting. Today is Monday, July 15th, 2019, 7:00 PM. If you'll please stand for the pledge, I will ask Councilman Nazo to please lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a public hearing scheduled for this evening, however, it was posted for 7:30, so we're not going to be having our public hearing until 7:30. So, having said that, we're going to jump ahead and do a couple of things, then we're going to come back and do our public hearing at 7:30, at which time I'll ask Carol to read the notice to the meeting. So first, I will ask if I may have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2019, special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight? Quiet for the summer, right? Okay, all right. We're going to move on with that. Thank you. We're going to go into our appointments and resignations. We have a few tonight to take care of.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint William Ritchie as a regular member of Planning and Zoning Commission for the term ending January 2nd, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to appoint Elizabeth Cresswell as a regular member of the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to remove probationary firefighter Michael Wisniak from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sailing right through here. All right. Court of Education, do we have a report? Mrs. Hardy?
Deb Hardy, 17 Maria Road. As of July 1st, Mr. Lapage was formerly our superintendent for school years, so we're happy to have him and we congratulate him again. We have negotiations that are in process. The office professionals and the custodians, those are still ongoing. We also have more that will be coming up in the next month or so. And Mr. Sanders will continue to be an interim principal at Linden for the 2019-2020 school year. Mrs. Eschew has retired. And Ms. Orfretelli will be full-time at the MSP when she gets back to school in August. She was on leave. And that's really all that I have.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay. Town Attorney, good evening.
Good evening. No report tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight. And Robert, would you like to start your report and then we will jump over to the public hearing?
Sure.
A couple of minutes.
First item I have on my report is what I've entitled Chief of the Year. In late March, the town received a letter from the Peace Islands Institute of Connecticut. They were partnering with the Yale University Police Department and the FBI New Haven, seeking nominations for their first annual Community Law Enforcement Awards and Recognition Dinner. That was to be held on June 25th. This was back in March. One of the categories for nominations was Police Chief of the Year. The Chief of the Year would be an individual that must have made a significant improvement within his agency that benefits members of the community. Examples could include a leader that causes new policy or procedures for an agency such as designing and implementing new advanced technology. Other examples of direct leadership could be mandating specific training of officers that create a better rapport between law enforcement and community members, or developing creative new approaches to old problems within the community. After conferring with town staff and unbeknownst to Chief Catania, a nomination for the Chief of the Year was submitted on May 2nd. Letters supporting the nomination were written by Catherine Paglisi, Dr. Maureen Brummett, Trish Tomlinson from the library, Sean Cohen and Rhonda Guberman from the Senior Center, Mark Fazano, who's from the Accreditation Division of the Connecticut State Police, and myself as the town manager. Shortly after our submission, the town was notified that Chief Catania was chosen to be one of the four finalists for Police Chief of the Year, and at the dinner held in East Haven on June 25th, Chief Matthew Catania was announced as the winner, the first of the first annual Chief of the Year. It was noted that Chief Catania was a clear choice for the award based on the wide-ranging support within the community, within the Plainville community. And I want to thank all of the individuals who assisted in putting together the nomination, putting this nomination forward. I also want to thank Chief Catania for his hard work and dedication to our community for the last eight and a half years, serving as the chief of the Plainville Police Department. And we are proud of your efforts and of your service.
He left.
I know. I told them we were going to talk about him. He's very embarrassed about the fact that we nominated him to begin with, but I think he's very proud of the fact that he was recognized at the dinner and...
Yeah, I think he was. I was there along with Councilwoman Tompkins and some other folks from the town, and he truly was surprised, as were we, right?
Well, we weren't surprised, but as...
Yeah, well, of course, but when you're in a room with all these other folks and law enforcement and the chief, and we were certainly pulling for him the whole way, but it was a great surprise, and I think he was pretty thrilled about it. What did you think, Deb?
Oh, I think he was over the moon thrilled, and it was just a great experience to see him get that award because he's number one with us always, depending, you know, regardless of whether he gets an award or not, but it was great to see his achievements acknowledged.
Yep, absolutely. So...
Very positive, you know, very positive response from people around the state with regards to Plainville's recognition as well, so. Next item I have is road paving update, and I know that we're going to have a public hearing to hear comments on the proposed ordinance appropriating $5 million for Phase II Road Improvement Program and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation. It is being recommended that this ordinance be placed on the November election ballot for consideration by the voters of Plainville. There is an item of new business should the town council wish to approve the ordinance this evening, and certainly, you know, you'll be hearing public comment shortly. The next item I have is the Pateroski Park walking path. A resident living on the north side of Birch Tree Road recently contacted town staff regarding the access to Pateroski Pond behind Wheeler School. In the past, residents living in the Birch Tree, Dogwood Road, Plum Tree Road area could access Pateroski Pond via a gate located on the Wheeler Elementary School property. There are approximately 40 homes on these three streets. Due to the recent school renovations and the need to restrict access on school properties during the school year, a new fence was constructed that now prohibits access to the pond area. I did provide you with some pictures of before and after, so you get a feel for the way it was as far as access was concerned in comparison to what is there today. Town staff consulted with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and their recommendation is to create a path on town-owned property adjacent to the east side of the new fence. This work will be performed by Buildings and Grounds, which would just be cutting about a six-foot-wide, you know, path through, basically is brush. This path would allow residents of this area to access Pateroski Park, as they have in the past. The path would be located approximately 175 feet from the nearest home located on Birch Tree Road, and there is a significant growth of trees and vegetation to act as a buffer in this area, remembering that the buffer is to buffer themselves from their neighbors who will be walking perhaps in this area. If there are no objections from the town council, town staff will plan to perform this work in the next 30 to 60 days.
Okay.
Next item I have is roadways diesel Class 8 dump truck bids. The fiscal year 20 capital improvement plan includes an appropriation of $220,679 to purchase a new diesel Class 8 dump truck for the roadways department to replace a 1991 Mack dump truck, 28-years-old. Bids for the truck were opened on July 3rd. The low bidder for the replacement truck was from Gabrielli. Truck sales of Hartford in the amount of $119,500. This includes the trade-in of the 1991 Mack truck for $8,500. On that same day, bids were also open for the snow removal equipment for a tandem cab and chassis. The low bidder for this equipment was submitted by Equipment Service of Hartford in the amount of $94,942. The total cost of both bids is $214,442, which is $6,237 less than the appropriated amount. Town staff is recommending that the town council authorize the purchase of the dump truck and related equipment from the low bidders, and there is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. That's all I have to report at this moment. I'd like to turn over to Scott Kobe for happenings, and it would be available for any questions you may have for us.
Great, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Scott.
So, the big event this upcoming weekend is the Plainville 150th Celebration. On Saturday, July 20th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, there will be air-conditioned bus tours of historic sites throughout the town. Maps and buses will be available at the Municipal Center, and the Historical Center, which is also air-conditioned, we know it's going to be a very hot weekend coming up, will also be open, and they'll have a bunch of historic displays that everyone's able to go and view. Also, at 10:00 AM on that day, they will have the church bells throughout Plainville that will ring in celebration of Plainville's 150th anniversary. And on Sunday, July 21st, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, there will be a family picnic at Norton Park. They do ask that you can bring blankets, any food that you'd like, although there will be food trucks available as well. There will be live music, games, and historic displays, as well as some antique cars. For the entertainment lineup, the fun begins with the Nzinga Daughters from 12:05 to 12:55, then the Senior Center ukulele group from 1:00 PM to 1:45 PM, and then the Old Time Fiddlers from 2:00 PM to 2:45 PM, concluding with the New Britain Symphony Brass Ensemble from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. They are still looking for volunteers for those who would like to assist with the event, and if anyone is also interested with the historic tours as well, they can volunteer for that. For any information regarding the events, or if someone is interested in volunteering, please send an email to plainville150th@gmail.com. And just moving on to the Senior Center briefly, on Monday, July 29th, the Senior Center will be accepting donations of tax sale items and jewelry for its annual tax sale event in August. Bring items during normal business hours between 9:00 AM and 5:30 PM. The Center cannot accept furniture, clothes, purses, shoes, or appliances. And if you're over the age of 60 and new to exercise, try the Pilates class at the Senior Center. Basic Pilates puts emphasis on your breathing, core conditioning, and body awareness. Bring a water bottle and a yoga mat if you have one. There is a free demo at the Senior Center on Monday, July 29th at 2:15 PM. A six-week class for Senior Center members will start Monday, August 19th for just $12. And the Senior Center will host its annual tax sale on Wednesday, August 7th, and Thursday, August 8th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You may also shop at their early bird pre-sale event on August 7th from 9:30 to 10:00 AM for a $1 fee. All proceeds benefit the dial-a-ride for Plainville. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Robert or Scott with their report?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did you say the shuttles would leave from the Municipal Central Park?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. What I'd like to do now is go back into our earlier portion of our meeting, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, and I would like to ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing first.
Thank you for the amendment. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 15th, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the council chambers at the Municipal Center, 1 Central Square in Plainville to consider the following matter. Proposed ordinance entitled Ordinance Appropriating $5 Million for the Phase II Road and Related Improvements Program and Authorizing the Issue of Bonds and Notes in the Same Amount to Finance the Appropriation. Copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the town clerk in the Plainville Public Library, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 11th day of July, 2019.
Thank you, Carol. With that, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing regarding the ordinance, please come to either podium, state your name and address. Thank you. Joanne?
Sure. Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. I was just wondering, in this $5 million bond, if Whiting Street is in this mix. I do understand, what I do know, or understand hearsay, is that a grant has to be proposed because it's a long street, it's a big one, and hopefully we'll get some money from the state for starting work on that. But has a grant been submitted? Is it in the works? It's, the street is really in disrepair. It's like riding a washboard. And I've said that before...
I don't have an answer to that. Do we have any information on a grant or some monies from the state to help us with this, Robert?
Well, a couple of things. The list of streets that are being considered would be those streets that have not been paved, repaved, from approximately 1988, and we feel that it will bring us perhaps up to as late as 1996. So it would be those streets that, and there's a number of streets that fit into that category. Whiting Street was last repaved, according to our records, in 1991. Whiting Street is also one of those streets that is categorized as being eligible under what they call the Lot-Sip Program, which is a local capital improvement program that is funded through the state. Their next round of applications, we believe, will be, and that runs through the Capital Region Council of Governments, will be perhaps by the end of this year, end of the calendar year. So at this point in time, a grant application has not been submitted. A lot of that depends upon what happens with the transportation program up at the state level, which is tied up with items such as tolls, or whether they're going to, the state's going to concentrate on bonding and whatnot. So hopefully, a lot of that will be worked out by the time we get to the end of the year, but the CROG Transportation Committee is kind of sending out feelers to the towns that are kind of telling us that, most likely, they'll be asking for applications perhaps by the end of, you know, this calendar year. So that's what we're kind of gearing up for. But even if the, so, even if the, if the bond is approved on November, you know, we would be paving probably one-fifth of the roads next summer, one-fifth of the roads in the summer after that, you know, for the next five years. So Whiting is on the list for doing without a grant, but what our goal at the town level is to give a good run at, see if we can get a grant, to get the state to pay for the whole thing, so that we can use some of the local funds to pay somewhere else. So it's a balancing act right now, but it is on the list, but we hope to get a state grant for it.
Thank you. Okay.
Maybe next year. I can hardly hear you, Robert.
Well, we are applying through Lot-Sip, which is a roadway grant through the state of Connecticut. It goes through CROG, so we have to apply for the money, and as the town manager said, we may know about that by the end of this year, if things are working the way they should up at the state, and then it would be next year, so. Either way, it's either going to be paid for through CROG and the Lot-Sip grant, or it'll be done incrementally through our paving program.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll have to wait another year, I guess.
Well, I wouldn't guarantee that it would be next summer. Even if we got the grant, it would not be done next summer because there's a process involved with that.
Okay.
So it's probably at least two years before you're going to see it done, one way or the other.
That whole street shakes the uh-uh-uh out of your car, you know? I mean, it really does. And another bad part is right by Cumberland Farms on Broad Street. Boy, that's like it's ready to cave in. It's like being on the crest of a wave, just going in and out. Did you know that? Have you been down that way?
All the time.
Huh?
All the time.
Yeah? Well...
I disagree with your categorization of Whiting Street. I think it does need to be repaved. I don't think it's as bad as...
It just goes kshkshksh, your car goes, you know?
Well, it doesn't do it to my car.
Oh, well, it does it to my car.
Okay.
My car's a fairly new car.
I'm not arguing with you.
I'm not going to argue about cars.
All right, thanks, Joanne.
Okay, all right.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing tonight regarding the ordinance that's being proposed? Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Dave Albert, Hollyberry Lane. Quick question. Interest rate on the bonds, if it was done today, I know it may change, but it's like 3%, 4%, something like that, or 3.5%?
I couldn't even hazard a guess on what those rates are right now. Maybe, Robert, have you looked at them lately?
Twenty-year bonds right now are still, I think there's, the rates have come down a little bit. We're probably 3% or less. We're not near 4 yet.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Just a question on the repaving. Is the way streets are chosen only by the last time they were refurbished, or, I mean, specifically, my street was repaved a couple of years ago, and I'm not sure it was really necessary. We had a pesky pothole at the end of the cul-de-sac, but I don't think anybody tried to repair it with any of the more modern techniques for doing that, and personally, I didn't have a problem with the road, and none of my neighbors were ever complaining. So I don't know if it was just like the age of the last time it was, or do we consider that plus the wear and tear on the particular roads we're doing? I mean, it's $5 million, that's, you know, to the taxpayers, that's not trump change on, you know, added to everything else we're paying for, so...
Well, the criteria are certainly the age of the roads, and also that's taken into consideration the condition of the roads. Am I correct? And those are two things, mostly age, but they do look at conditions of other roads that may be in...
Yeah, if there's a particular road that's been paved, you know, hasn't been repaved in 15 years or other than 20 years, that's in, you know, worse shape, and that will be considered. I will tell you that, you know, we don't want, we want to avoid waiting till the road is in bad shape before we repave it, because then it can cost significantly, you know, more money to repave. Repaving, a newly repaved road does increase property values of the people who live along that street as well, so there's a lot of variety of factors that go into place, but not necessarily the age, although that, generally, the age is a guide as far as, as far as, as far as the condition of the road.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the age should be like a primary consideration to look at the road, but I mean, some roads are used extensively and some roads are used hardly at all, you know, just people getting in and out. So I'm hoping, I don't know what your process is, or if you have engineers looking at things and evaluating, but, I mean, personally, my own road, I don't, I didn't think it really needed to be repaved, but it was done, so I'm hoping, you know, for the taxpayer's sake, you know, we take it carefully, and if it's not necessary, let's not do it just because we have some money to spend, okay?
Okay.
I will point out that if the referendum is approved, we take the list of streets and we present them to the Capital Projects Building Committee, and we have them review the streets, and if, you know, and so we get, you know, an opinion from, you know, the people who are in the Capital Projects Building Committee with respect to, you know, the list of streets that we're proposing going forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else? One last time? Okay, thank you for your comments. I will close the public hearing, move on to the other items on our agenda. Okay, next on our agenda is the public comments section. During this time, we invite citizens to come and speak to the council for three minutes one time. When you come to this podium, please state your name and address. I'm going to go a little bit off of our list and ask John Kissel to step up first. You have a report regarding part of the 150th anniversary activities that you'd like to present to us, so if you'd like to start?
John Kissel, 65 Forest Hill Avenue.
We're not going to time him for this, okay? Scott will time him when you got to say something else after that.
Okay. As all of you know, I'm a member of the 150th Anniversary Committee. Basically, I was like a subcommittee on the sale of the commemorative coin. And this council has Councilwoman Maranti to blame for me being on this committee. Because she called me tonight at one of your meetings when you already had your committee picked, and she told me that I should be on it, so I am. I'd like to make a little report about what happened with the coin sales and recognize some people for what they did, their help in to complete these sales. We did sell out. We sold 299 coins because the committee agreed to give one to Ashley, the high school student who designed our logo. But anyway, I want to start out with, you know, I really have to thank the hometown connection with Helen Brigenti and Kathy Paglisi, the way they plastered that paper with, I mean, front page and headed all over the place. And then we had Shirley and Scott with the press releases and happenings. By the time we even received the coins, they were still not even minted. I had a list of over 50 people who ordered these coins, and that was because of the advertising. It was really good. We even had to set up one Saturday in Plainville Library, Saturday morning, for people to come in and pick up, because there's no way I'd be able to deliver all these things, they're all over. We had people from out of town that bought coins. It was, it was just really great. And as far as other people helping too, Carol, for probably a good two weeks towards the end of our sale, she offered to sell some in a town clerk's office, and they sold 12 of them for us, which was, was really great. We had one person that used to be a teacher in the Plainville school system, now living in Arizona, saw an article in Hartford Current and ordered a coin. We sent four down to Florida, different people. And one of the things I really, really liked, we had a handful of people and businesses that made large purchases. We had one businessman who, when I told him what we were going to be doing, right from the beginning, he says, "I want one." So he got it, and next thing you know, every time I stopped into his place, he wanted another coin. And then he wanted 10 for his employees. He ended up buying 16 coins. Then I had another business owner, a really, really generous person in town. His brother-in-law, also a business person who lives in town, bought seven coins and sent somebody else to me to buy two more. Well, this person, I called him and told him what we were doing, we're selling coins for our anniversary, and he says, you know, "What'd you like me to do?" I says, "Well, if you'd like to buy some coins." He said, "Give me $500 worth." Well, I went to his office, told him first, "Don't make out the check yet," because $500 would only be 14 coins at $4.90. He ended up paying $5.25, he bought the 15 coins. And when you get people like this, and you're trying to do this, you're running all over town and stuff, real difficult, and you get somebody like this, it makes you feel good about doing something like this and making it worthwhile. We had, we had town employees that bought coins. I'll just mention a few. We had Dave Emery, Mike Perry, Jim Kane. Shirley bought a bunch, and she distributed them to different people, so I don't know who they went to. I'm not sure everybody that Carol sold them to, but... But we had BOE members, council members, and one other person that I really liked, our new superintendent of schools. I told him we were going to be doing this, and he said he wanted to get one. So I went and visited him in his office one day. He bought it, and he's keeping it on display with two Navy commemorative coins that he got when there was some kind of activity at the Plainville High School pool. So that was really great, too. He showed me these coins, and he's got now three commemorative coins. What happened, little after the middle of June, things started slowing down, and I said, "The bills are coming in." And we had a lot of bills to pay, and we still had like 85 coins to go. So Marilyn is a retired sales professional, and I got her to volunteer to go out and sell these coins. She wanted to see if she still had the touch. Well, she hit over 50 businesses and individuals. One of them, one of her favorites, is our new Chief of the Year, Katania. He's a chief, and of course, chief, like you said about chief, he is a great person. I mean, he treated her like he expected her to come in. He wanted to buy a coin. She left, and about 15 minutes later, he gives her a call to come back. Another employee in records wanted two more coins. I had already sold to the other employee in records, you know, right from the beginning. Her dad happened to be the first person who ever bought any coins, so I hand-delivered them to him, and she bought them too. They bought six coins together. So anyway, Marilyn went to work. I mean, she went to businesses even out of town. And she caused, besides the chief, she corralled Fire Marshal Sutherland, got him to buy a coin, run into him. Roadway Superintendent Dominic, got him. She went to Plainville Plumbing Supply, and they bought three coins, but they paid us $40 a coin, even though they were 35. And then she went to John's Barber Shop, and he gave us a $20 cash donation. So to make a long story short, the committee made a total of $4,230 on the sale of these coins to use for our activities. But one other thing I want to point out about this coin, for everybody who bought it. Oh, one other very important person, Quinn Christopher. She's a favorite of ours, and Quinn bought a coin, you know, ex-town council person. So that was really great. Quinn is a friend of ours, so that was good. The other point I want to make is, this is one troy ounce of silver, practically pure silver, so it has the silver value, so you know this, you didn't buy something that wasn't worth anything besides the 150th anniversary celebration. You have a valuable piece of metal. Thank you for letting me speak on that.
Thank you for working on that project. Very successful, and congratulations, John. Okay. The next person on our list is Art Marino. Mr. Marino?
How you doing? Art Marino, 22 Tuttle Street, Bristol, Connecticut. I'm the curator for the Tommaso Nature Park. I said I would be here every three months, basically to give you an idea of what's going on with the park. And right now, believe me, we're on a record schedule, the way it's looking right now. Park's been open for three months. I've got 168 people go through the park already, just on tours alone. Most of them that I've been going through with, scouts and brownie troops, doing a lot of badges, and they're turning around, getting into what they call their conservation awards. So they've been working with me on that. Couple sightings, and I'm gonna turn around, I'm gonna ask the people not to feed these guys. We have two bears going through the park. They have tags on them, okay? A lot of people are complaining over by the airport that the bears are going through their properties and stuff like this. Well, they have to stop feeding them, because that's what they're doing. We have the swan back. We have a herd of deer. Somebody called me up and told me they've counted nine of them, okay? And one, believe it or not, I don't know if anybody knows, but we call a rack on them. It's a set of horns. They says they are humongous. So there's a biggie. Turtles. I know everybody's waiting for this one. We put in the dirt pad, okay, with the sand, and believe it or not, no more complaints. The turtles are actually laying the eggs in the sand beds. I went down there, double-checked, and they're hatching. So the problem's been eliminated. We don't have it anymore. And then otherwise, like I said, you know, I have, well, I have one tour, believe it or not, tonight, okay? People wanted to get somewhat a picture of the landscaping with the moon and stuff like this coming. I says, "Fine, I'll be there." But otherwise, the way it looks right now, I have four more tours lined up. Those four tours are gonna take us over the 200 mark. So we're doing real good. The park is really prospering, and the nice thing is, is we don't charge anything. Nobody gets paid for anything over there. So a lot of our time that we do down there is all volunteer. So I thank the people that helped me. I do have a couple that come down and do it. So I'm figuring the biggest thing now is get you guys out there. I would like to turn around and invite the council out there, so I can give you guys a tour, and there's a couple other groups that are coming down, also the Conservation Commission, those groups. So otherwise, right now, the park looks good. I'll see you in three months. I gotta go do another tour.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all your time and reporting to us. We appreciate that. Thanks, Art.
Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. I oppose alignment C of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail or any alignment that negatively impacts Pierce Street and other Plainville neighborhoods. On June 18th, the Old Mill condominium board met with DOT representatives Scott Bushy and Vitaly Staroverov to discuss the proposed trail on Pierce Street and potential alternatives. At that time, we learned several things. The north end of the Southington Trail into Plainville is ready to go out to bed. It may already be out to bed as I speak. DOT will be concentrating on designing and constructing the southern portion of the Plainville Trail into Norton Park as a first step. And DOT plans to construct the path on the Mule Hall Trail as it is the simplest route. Most of you are probably not aware that Ruth Hummel and I were good friends. I watched her passionately fight to preserve what she could when progress increasingly destroyed Plainville's history. When condominiums were built over the canal route, she succeeded in working with developers to preserve the canal prison as part of the design. When Blossom's Tavern was torn down, she took pictures and preserved an old beam, which can be seen in the canal ruin of the historic center. If Ruth were alive today, she would be speaking with the town and DOT to ensure that portions of the Mule Hall Trail be restored and preserved, so that cyclists and walkers could view an important part of the town's history. Unfortunately, Ruth is no longer with us to take on this challenge. It falls on those of us who care and on you as town representatives. Your constituents stand before you, meeting after meeting, trying to alert you about happenings related to the trail. You may not like the way they speak, but it is important that you listen to and truly hear what they say. While you sit and wait for DOT plans telling us that nothing related to the trail can be done until you vote, we are telling you that plans and even initial steps of construction are already underway. I am calling on you to be on top of trail developments and to be proactive, ensuring that portions of the tow path be restored and preserved, much like the Cheshire Lock and Lockkeeper's House or the tow path to the Farmington Aqueduct. I respectfully request that this statement become part of the public record, along with the council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I've gone through the list of those who signed up, but if anybody else wishes to speak that has not signed, please raise your hand, come to the podium. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, council members. Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. How y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Hi, everybody. I wanted to make a recommendation, and this might be the perfect time, since we're doing a major renovation on the Wheeler School, and we're about to celebrate the 150th anniversary of Plainville. I'd like to suggest, offer a suggestion to this council that we have a time capsule which could be included, which would include paper clippings and memorabilia from the events of this coming weekend. And I hope you'll consider it. I thought that it was a novel idea. I'm not sure if we did it for the 100th, if anybody has any recollection, but I think that it'll be a novel idea. We won't be here to see it opened up, but nonetheless, it could be planted when they have the opening of the Wheeler School, when it's reopened. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I look forward to seeing you all at the events this weekend.
Thanks.
John Kissick, 65 Forestville Avenue. This is one good thing that happened. Marilyn and I go fishing out to Hamlin's Pond a couple times a year, take the aluminum rowboat, and I row all the way out to where the river comes in. And I don't know if it was the state did it or the town did it, but they actually paved about 50 feet of paving for the access for the boats to be brought into Hamlin's Pond. It's really, really great. There used to be big ruts from the rainstorms, but maybe when they were doing Woodford Avenue, maybe they did it, I don't know if the town got them to do it, but I just wanted the council to know it's great. There's a lot of people going out there. We were out there on the 7th, and there must have been five or six other boats and kayaks out there, and this makes it a lot better for driving down there to launch their little boats. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so?
Edmund. Joel Edmund, 63 Hollyberry Lane. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. Catherine Labella's information was very revealing to me, which I am quite disillusioned by some of what she said. However, I said this before, and I'll say it once more. This trail gap alignment or any other alignment that does not adhere to the original rails that trails designed through Plainville, we like the circus that never leaves town. And unfortunately, that includes all the clowns and aggravations that Plainville people will be forced to put up with forever. Forrest Gump's mother told him, "Life is like a box of chocolate. You don't know what you are going to get." I think this trail gap closure through Plainville is essentially the same thing. Now, Dumas suggested that as many as 200,000 people per year would possibly be using the Heritage Trail gap closure through Plainville. In five years' time, that could possibly extrapolate to be 1 million. In 10 years, 2 million. For homeowners that will be negatively affected when it passes by the privacy of their treasured properties, this is unacceptable. Some of that trail traffic will be troublemakers, least of which will be dropping litter, hanging out, defecating, urinating, making noise, posting graffiti, graffiti, and anything else that can be imagined, you can imagine. I ask, where is the respect, common decency, and consideration of our town manager and council when they adamantly push their approval for the altered trail gap closure through Plainville like a snake, slithering and weeding through the quietness and privacy of local neighborhoods and streets? And what is the big rush to get the revised trail to Norton Park from Town Line Road through private land, wetlands, floodplain, and possibly be on the historic Mule Hall tow path, when the town of Southington is still contemplating how they will deal with their five-mile gap? If at all, which I found out tonight is different. The Mule Hall tow path, which, like the Colt buildings in Hartford, could well become a natural historic site. It is still in its emergent condition, minus the survey stakes and cutting of trees and brush for the surveyors that have been thrashing through, and on top of it there with their quiet machetes and saws. I would like to talk about the future destruction of trees.
Mr. Edmund, could you wrap up?
Maybe next time, when I have more time to speak.
Thank you.
No rail, no trail, and no thank you. And thank you for the interruption.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. It seems like police overtime has been kind of a constant issue over the last few years. The last month or so, I've been lucky enough to drive through two seatbelt checks where there were two, three officers, you know, and I don't know if that was the only two checks they've run in the town, or if I was just lucky enough to hit them. And my point is, if we're really concerned about overtime, are things like seatbelt checks really necessary? I mean, couldn't we send these officers home a little early and reduce that overtime? I mean, just because they're on the town payroll doesn't mean they have to have overtime. I mean, it just... Can't we just trust the citizens enough to buckle up if they have the common sense to do that before they drive down the street? It just seems, it's a little unnecessary. I mean, it's kind of a minor point, but it's probably just one of many things to be considered.
The police department would be getting grants from the State of Connecticut and other agencies in order to pay for those seatbelt check times that the police officers are out there. I'm not sure if that's still the case. Do we still get grants for seatbelt awareness?
They're being paid for by a federal grant.
Federal grant, okay.
Federal grant that encourages people to wear seatbelts. That is not impacting the local taxpayers with regards to the mil rate.
Okay, thanks. So anyway, they've all been federally funded. So it's not part of what we were discussing tonight.
Okay. I guess, I guess my complaint would be with the federal government, then.
Okay.
The repaving and reconfiguration of Woodford Avenue, it's been changed. When you're going towards New Britain, towards 84 eastbound, Merlin Avenue, or Merlin Street, I don't know. It used to break into two lanes. People going straight would be on the left, people turning onto Merline or 84 would be in the right. So I mean, turning red on the left or right on red, you know, it kind of kept that intersection clear, and now it's been turned into just one lane that way. So I mean, if you hit it at the wrong time, you might be the 12th, 15th car in line, and you know, you might have to sit through that light twice to get through it. Has this been done as kind of a preliminary work for the trail?
No.
Or it hasn't been?
No.
Or could it be considered to put it back the way it used to be? I mean, it seemed like the traffic flow was so much nicer just a month ago, you know? Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. As always, for Carol, for the record, I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that would negatively impact Pearon Road, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway, into the park, and of course, the Mule Hall Trail. It's gotta be preserved. It cannot be desecrated with hikers and bikers. It's gotta be preserved, because that's history. And as I said last time we were here, it's like driving a stake into the heart of history. You can't, you can't keep doing that. Oh, just take a look around this town and all the wonderful buildings that have been torn down. It's just terrible. Okay, so now, currently, for my heart, from my heart, I am very concerned about a couple of ongoing sagas, and of course, one of which is the trail, and all the ramifications that come with this trail business. It's, it's gonna cause a lot of disruption, and intrusion, and invasion. And what more can be said, except every, Kathy spells it out all the time, my brother spells it out all the time. I can't say much more, except that it is, it's gonna be so, I don't know how these bicyclers and hikers got so, such a strong contingency. Nobody would say anything if it was the railroad track, but it's not. And unfortunately, I have to say something about the ongoing saga over at the Senior Center. I'm very upset about that. First of all, before I get started, has that been resolved? That big problem over there?
Not, not to my knowledge.
It's a big problem.
Under review.
Oh, God, I mean, how long, how much longer is it gonna be under review? It's just, it's so ridiculous. It's so easy to solve it. Just let them sing. Let them sing about the Lord. And you know what? On Fox News, you have that wonderful Mark Levin. He had a pastor on this past Sunday. It's just wonderful how they have taken up the sword, so to speak. And over there at the Senior Center, it would be very good. You know what's gonna happen? I'm gonna go in there, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna sing the minute I hit the door. And I can sing. I've got a voice. It's loud enough. And I'm gonna sing, "Onward, Christian soldiers, marching as to war, with the cross of Jesus going on before." You know something? They don't want to hear the word Jesus over there, but Christ has it, and it's going to, it's gonna happen. And then how about the Battle Hymn of the Republic? We used to go off to horse shows singing that in the truck. It was wonderful. "My eyes have seen the coming of the glory of the Lord. He is trampling out the vintage where the grapes of wrath are stored. He has loosed the fateful lightning of His terrible swift sword. His truth is marching on."
Your time has expired, Joanne. Thank you.
I'm offstage now.
Okay. Yep. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. Just a couple of quick ones. This work session with the police overtime, where do we go from here? Where's, what does this problem move on to next? We've had a work session, now what happens?
I'm not sure. I think the chief gave a pretty expansive explanation as to why these hours are being accrued. I'm not sure. I did ask about, how do we fare in terms of comparison with other similar towns? I guess we could follow that lead. Each town is different, of course. You know, we're in the middle of a lot of crossroads here. So, you know, we'll take it under consideration. I will certainly call my fellow council members to see if they need more information, or if there's something they thought about after we got all of that tonight, so.
Okay. You know, I'm not pointing an accusing finger anywhere. It just seems, now, and it's been brought up before, it just seems nobody can get their hands around this for some reason. One. And attached to that, what I found very, personally, what I found interesting tonight, I had more questions than I heard from the town council. And to be quite honest with you, I'm surprised there was only three people. I believe Mr. Wazurko, Mr. Nazo, and yourself are the only ones that asked questions. And there are a lot of base questions as the chief was speaking. One of them, we're talking about the average age of the force. That's significant. That's very significant. That never came up. I don't understand that part, but this is just my personal thing. I shouldn't be pointing it. It's just my personal thing. Is the overtime, is it based on the police force's size? Do we need more personnel? Now, I've asked that at meeting after meeting, and I've been told no. All right? Then I heard it tonight. All right? Another one. Not based on medical leave. Are we having problems with officers not feeling well? Is it impacting our budget that deep? Because medical costs go through the roof. I'm living proof.
Yeah. I don't know the specifics about being out sick. I think some of these things, as he explained, are, there's a lot of time that they spend after they've gone through their shift, and then if there's an incident report that requires somebody to appear in court the next day, that paperwork must be filed with the court before he leaves for his shift, he or she leaves. So, there's a lot of bureaucracy in terms of what the state is requiring from them, and in terms of follow-up investigations, in terms of appearing at the court. There's a lot.
I understand that.
Okay.
I do. See, you mentioned, another question I did have, before I run out of time, and I've mentioned this before, too. Has there been an increase in crime in the town of Plainville? And that directly relates to what you were saying, the chief was also saying, you can't base it against, example, Avon or Simmsbury, which makes a lot of sense. But is there an impact? You know, are we getting hit harder than other towns?
I think the chief had one time given us a report several months ago, that we are a very busy police department in comparison to an Avon or a Simmsbury. And purposely, the reason is, is our location, we are a crossroads between a number of towns around us, the mall.
I understand.
There's a lot of activity there, and there's, there's just a lot that goes on, that our police department is very diligent about following up and responding to some calls, so.
Okay. The great, the great majority of the police calls are not necessarily related to criminal cases, they're related to service calls. So, you know, and there's a lot of service calls in Plainville. So, it isn't necessarily a reflection of crime, but because, you know, a lot of it has to do with service calls. Okay. That makes sense to me, too. I guess, I guess, and in my prior world, I supervised, and one of the things, when you supervise, you're measured by overtime of your units. And I was way, are you gonna be presented, example, if I may use an example. If I was having a problem with overtime, the first thing I would look for is, what shift is getting the most hits?
Stuff time.
All right. That's one of the first things I would look at. And this is, again, this is a gentleman that's sitting in the back of the room. All right? It just seems everybody was, it sounded like they were just shooting in the dark. And I stand to be corrected, I'm not insulting or condemning the police. I love our police force. But, I'm going to question. And it just doesn't seem, because I, if I didn't know, and I'm gonna end on this, if I didn't know any better, all right, we're gonna resolve this budget this year, and we're gonna have this problem next year. And it just doesn't seem that wants to go away, and nobody seems to have an answer. I see a lot of head bobbing and weaving, but all of a sudden, we're sitting here saying, "We don't have money." Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else?
Dave Albert, Hollyberry Lane. The question that begs to be asked is, has, does anyone on the town council or our town manager have any knowledge that what Catherine is saying is right or wrong?
They're not out to bid. They haven't finished the design.
Okay, but how about the tow path? Have they gone back?
They have not presented anything. I have no idea what she was talking about, you know, so that's not what was reported to me from Scott Bushy as a result of that report of the meeting with the mill pond, with the condominiums. So, I have no idea what she's talking about, but I can guarantee you that there's nothing out to bid. No plans have been finalized with regards to where it's gonna go, from Norton Park down to Southington.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? I think we've gone through almost everybody out there. One last chance?
Joseph, one of them hasn't spoken, right? We should just call on him.
We're still calling on people that didn't put their hand up. No. We won't do that. All right. Thank you for your comments. We will close the public comments section, move on to the rest of our agenda. Okay, we have no old business, so we will move on to our new business. We have a few items to take care of, and may I have a motion for item number one?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Appropriating $5 Million for the Phase Two Road and Related Improvements Program, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid 2019-20, 2020 Diesel Class 8 Dump Truck to Gabrielli Truck Sales of Connecticut, of Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount of $119,500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2019-21, snow removal equipment for tandem cabin chassis to Equipment Service of Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount of $94,942.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for all of that. Item 12, other discussions of interest. Mr. Lee, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. All right. We don't have anything else, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.